Welcome for being with us today. And sorry, we're a little late getting started. Please stand and join with myself and the rest of the board to with us. I can't talk today. Salute the flag.
That's what's called. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first, I'm going to go to our CIO to see if there's modifications to the agenda.
Good morning, Chair Bass. There are no modifications today.
Okay. And before we move forward, I will say the way we're going to do the first part of the morning is we were going to do the consent calendar, then public comment on non-agenda items, then we'll go to the 9:05 a few minutes late. We just want to get as much in as we can this morning. So at this point, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
There is a motion.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any comments from the board right now? Did you want to read your?
I don't want to read it, but I want to recognize that October is Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month, and that this Thursday, the 20th, is if you show support to wear purple, it's the national day. And I asked our Maggie for some statistics. A lot of people don't recognize or realize that you could be sitting next to someone that's going through a domestic violence issue, and it's very prevalent everywhere. And in '21, there were 616 cases referred to Maggie's office, and 223 of those in Humboldt County were charged. And so far, in '22, there were 370 cases, and 164 of those were charged. That's pretty dramatic. And anybody experiencing domestic violence, it's life-altering, and it can make your life miserable. And so I just really want to recognize October as Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month.
All right. Thank you. And at this point, we'll go out to the public for public comment on the consent calendar. And this is the time for members of the public who want to comment on an item that appears there. If you're listening at home, or if you're watching at home and you wish to make comment, now would be the time to turn the volume off on your video feed, because there's a time delay. If you don't, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will go to those second. First, I'm going to go to those who are here in the audience with us. If you want to speak on something that's on the consent calendar, now would be the time. And I think we have some folks from, yeah, come on up. And there's a three-minute time limit, which is pretty strict, so.
Okay.
Welcome, Michael.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Mike Holmes, and I'm the former president of the Humboldt Classic Singer Softball Association. And I'm only here to thank you for preparing the plaque relations for the four members that we inducted into the Hall of Fame on Saturday in Humboldt Bay. And Dr. Bert Steele, Stan Alcock, and the families who are still here of Bob Kristic and Bill Britton, also thank you. And I really came up really to show you the plaque that we had made for these gentlemen.
That's on after Johnny.
That's what we had made for them. And just to be very brief on, very quickly on all four of them. Dr. Bert Steele, when he was here, he helped form the softball league with Stan Alcock, and for 30 years, they kept it going. And without them, we wouldn't have a softball league. And we've made many friendships over the years through our softball league. And Bert, when he retired, he was in the podiatry business. When he did finally retire, he was altruistic. He went out to these homes and took care of people who had podiatry problems, and he took care of them pro bono, which in legal terms, you know, means he did it for nothing. He took care of them, didn't cost them anything, and he did this till the end of his life. And with Stan Alcock, he was locally responsible for a lot of softball teams, baseball teams, basketball teams, youth sports, as well as adult sports, until the end of his life. And then Bob Kristic and Bill Britton do the same thing right now in the community, and they're in their mid-80s, and they're still doing it. And they're still playing softball. So we were proud to induct all four of them into our Senior Softball Hall of Fame, and I thank the board for allowing me to speak on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. And is there anyone else who wants to comment on an item that's on the consent calendar? I'm seeing none, so we'll go to those on the phone. And Nikki, I'm still trying to get my eye legislate up. Can you tell me, would you please call the first one?
Yes, Madam Chair. Caller 0116.
All right, 0116, press star six to unmute.
Hello, this is Ash here with Humboldt Free Coalition and the Losco's Populist. What I would like to talk about today is the need for people to look beyond their political identities when considering information, realize that the mainstream media knowingly lied about the Hunter Biden laptop scandal during the 2020 election. Did that influence the most secure election in U.S. history?
Okay. We're going to come back. I'm going to consider this actually one that's meant for a little bit later this morning. All right. Is there anyone else with hands up?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we'll go back to the board. We do have a motion in a second, and if there's any further discussion. Do we have a roll call vote on this, please, Nikki?
Of course. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5:0.
All right. So then we'll go on to public comment on items that are not on the agenda, which I think is where we might have had the other person a little confused. So now's the time, if you want to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to come up now for your three minutes. So this is general public comment, and we will go to those in the public first, and you better get up fast if anyone's interested, or we're going to move on. Steve, are you coming up? I didn't want you to miss your opportunity.
Thank you, Supervisor and Chair Virginia Bass, our Vice Chair Steve Madrone, Supervisor Mike Wilson, Supervisor Rex Bone, Supervisor Michelle Bushnell, and all of our gainfully employed people here. I am so hopeful that our best efforts will be given moving forward on the keen attention to making Humboldt County the best place for people to live, whatever age they are, and for our guests. I have significant hopefulness, Steve Madrone, that our District 5 will take a makeover for the blight and the graffiti that continues unabated. And I'm hopeful that our best efforts for being ready for people still possibly in fire, wildfire, crisis, and other natural disasters that we've survived well here in Humboldt County, where folks in Florida and now there's a cold snap predicted. So I am also keenly interested in our best efforts from the streets of Eureka, Arcata, and the woods of McKinleyville, Trinidad, and all parts where we can quickly help people who are mentally challenged. Because what we can do, we're just getting a good night's sleep, healthy food, clean clothes, and personal hygiene delivered in a timely way, also adding to the decrease of the domestic violence that is a very challenged part of our history here. Thank you very much for making this October the best Thanksgiving Day every day through the harvest and Thanksgiving season, through the holidays, and our planning on to 2023. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone here that wanted to comment on general public comment items? Not seeing anyone. Nikki, I'm still having a hard time getting into my system.
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead. There's no feed. I just got a message that there's no feed. Is that okay? Public Works just texted me and said there's no.
Well, I mean, we're allowed to still continue according to you. So you're saying, what about video, I mean, like Zoom or?
Zoom's working. Streaming is not, apparently, at this point.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And I do have some callers. The first caller is 0116.
All right. Hopefully, this is the right one. 0116. Ash, press star six to unmute.
Hello, this is Ash here with Humboldt Free Coalition and the Losco's Populist. What I would like to talk about today is the need for people to look beyond their political identities when considering information, realize that the mainstream media knowingly lied about the Hunter Biden laptop scandal during the 2020 election. Did that influence the most secure election in U.S. history? I think the Time Magazine article titled "The Secret History of the Shadow Campaign Saved the 2020 Election" pretty much said it all. Every attempt to interfere with the proper outcome of the election was defeated since Bassett, the co-founder of Project Democracy, a nonpartisan rule-of-law advocacy group. A well-funded cabal of people ranging across industries and ideologies, working together behind the scenes to influence perceptions, change rules and laws, steer media coverage, and control the flow of information. With that, here are some headlines that you might have missed from sources that you might not normally consider. I will email this to you all with hyperlinks and headlines. The European Public Prosecutor's Office confirms it has ongoing investigation into the acquisition of the COVID-19 vaccines in the European Union. A fully vaxxed bodybuilding icon who took the vaccine to prove it was safe died unexpectedly. The same PR firm that represents Pfizer and Moderna was hired by the CDC during the pandemic. The court ordered CDC to release data showing 18 million vaccine injuries in America. Hawkeye was caught secretly editing and crometing bat virus documents weeks after the COVID outbreak. Soros money is being pushed to Big Tech to censor disinformation, as they call it, before midterms. The FBI is refusing to surrender evidence of the Seth Rich murder, violating a court order in the Durham trial. A government insider revealed that cancer deaths from the COVID jabs are being hidden. A new study has found that Pfizer's Pax Lovid COVID-19 pill causes adverse reactions to patients, including deadly blood clots. Moving back to the scene, this is the biggest corruption scandal in the history of the world, says the MEP. If you haven't already done so, please familiarize yourself with Oshwa and World Economic Forum. Also, familiarize yourself with Agenda 2030 and the Fourth Industrial Revolution. Do you know that Biden, Trudeau, Johnson, and many other figures pushing Build Back Better platform are all at one time part of the young global leaders group? We must all come together to avoid a dystopian, cashless society where we are herded into compliance with digital surveillance and a state of social credit system. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next, we have 7108. Good morning.
My comments are about the agenda.
Okay.
We have this time certain at 9:30.
Okay. I would come back. Actually, if this is on the next, another item, we'll just, we'll stay on the line, okay? We'll be back to it. Yeah, it's on the, it's on 9:30 time set, but we'll be running a little behind for that, I believe, as well. All right. So then goes 3053, if that's, if you're calling, I think, Thomas, for the, something not on the agenda, this would be the time to speak.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder. I just want to clarify, you can hear me, Chair?
Yes, Thomas.
All right. So I'm going to circle, I have some sentiments, I'm going to circle back and tie this into non-agenda items. Myself, looking at the agenda for today and previous meeting's agendas, and looking at future agenda items, it would be really great to look at items that are on the agenda that could be detrimental to the livelihoods of so many residents of Humboldt County. Be set for time certain when there's so many time certain items on the agenda. It's very, very challenging to see scheduling, calling in and stuff like that. I will just tell you, speaking from my heart, with what your agenda has today, if I did not have the ability to participate via phone call, I'd be sitting in your chambers all day long until I had the opportunity to walk to that podium and look all five of you in the eyes and explain what things mean to me, how it feels. With that said, I feel we need to work together, continue working, government, community, citizens, everyone working together to improve our county, and seeing what that means is a community is where somewhere from people from all walks of life can sit down at an event or come together and feel comfortable bringing their children and their loved ones and other generations of their family to those events, and, you know, put all their differences aside and be there for whatever the event is. We are going through challenging times as a community, as a county, as a state, as a nation, and we've got to continue working together to find a common solution or a common agreement. And sometimes we just have to respectfully agree to disagree. I mean, at times, I feel that we do really, really good, and sometimes we don't do so well, myself included. Something I'm personally working on is respectfully agreeing to disagree at times. So I wish you luck, and I pray for time certain agenda items in the future when it looks detrimental, being detrimental to people's livelihoods. Thank you for listening this week.
All right. Thank you. And so there's no additional hands up on the phone?
No. Madam Chair, but 7108 raised her hand again, and I'm not sure if she now has something.
Okay. So Bonnie, if you wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda, you can do so now, and if you're waiting for the other item that hasn't quite come up yet.
I, what I was trying to say is, you have these time certants for 9:30, and I'm trying to figure out when the department report is on. So when you put these time certants, and there's no idea when it's coming in, I don't know how the public, are we supposed to sit and listen to this for how long? Maybe it's going to come on in the afternoon. So I just, do you have any idea when the planning department's discussion about alternative owner filter ordinance, what time that that's going to come up? So that's my comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bonnie. All right. So now that we're back to the board, I will say, none of us are really fans of time-set items. They get this, they're very hard to manage. It's not just those at home who are trying to figure this out, and staff, it's us as well. So unfortunately, sometimes we have to do that because we are meeting with some people who maybe don't live here. There could be attorneys, obviously, in closed session. You have a few of those that pass through. So it's not something we want to do to aggravate people because we find it just as aggravating, at least I do. And so in two months or three months, when I'm watching from home, I might call and say, why are you doing this? No, I won't do that. Yeah. And, but I did want to also say, just get a heads up for those, depending how long the item from the sheriff takes, and then we'll do the 9:05, we should be able, I think, to get to the, well, the 9:30 closed session items, and then, how long do you think those are going to be? I mean, if we want to take a wild guess, which is usually not correct, but we try.
I really, I can't. I can't guess. We're hoping for 10:30, but I think that's probably optimistic.
Okay. Well, we'll do the best we can. So Supervisor Madrone?
Is it fair to say, Madam Chair, that we will probably get this done before noon, because I believe some board members want to be able to leave this afternoon? So sometime after 10:30.
We are hoping.
But before 1 o'clock.
Yeah. We're definitely hoping.
Thank you.
So with that, we will go on to, yes, Supervisor Bone?
Just real quickly, but it's a non-agenda item. Could I have the Health Department remind us again when the flu shot drive-through is for our employees, because it's so important that they take that for the ones that want to and are able to come to work and not make anybody else sick? I know this is off the agenda, but this is, we have employees listening, and we try to make it as easy as possible for those that want to take the shot.
Well, that wasn't non, non, item. Wasn't on the idea. Okay, this fits here kind of.
Public information.
Well, I appreciate the plug, Supervisor Bone, because our flu clinic for county employees is today, in fact. So folks can go up until, I believe, about 2 o'clock today to Redwood Acres, and it's available for county employees on county paytime to be able to get their flu shot.
And since I'm taking non-agenda items, I really, really miss when you used to come up here and give us our shots every year and let people know that, you know, and I actually miss, no offense, Supervisor Madrone, I miss Ryan Sundberg having to get his nose spray because he was definitely scared of needles. He was kind of a wimp. But anyway, just, I'd like to see that, just so we can lead by example. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So we actually, let's do 9:05 quickly. So 9:05 is the, comes from the Clerk of the Board and is regarding the RCRC appointments.
Good morning, Madam Chair. The item before you today is for your board to consider making appointments of the delegate and alternate for the rural county representatives of California Board of Directors, the Golden State Finance Authority, and the Golden State Connect Authority. Your current serving members are Supervisor Bone as the delegate and Supervisor Bushnell as the alternate. And with that, I'll push it back to the board for your discussion.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell? Saw your hand move.
Sure. So I would like to make a motion that we retain Supervisor Bone. He's doing a good job and represents well, and I would be interested in doing the alternate position again.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Thank you, Kathy. So we will go, is anyone in the audience here who wishes to speak on this appointment item? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to those on the phone. Anyone?
No, Madam Chair, we have no callers.
All right. So Supervisor Bone, we'll go back to the board.
No, I don't talk myself out of this. I appreciate that. I'm on all the executive committees for these. I was just recently voted in as the Executive Committee for Region One, which is the eight northern counties, so I represent them on the Executive Committee. And RCRC does this a lot. This last Sunday, I was able to spend eight and a half hours with a Public Utilities Commissioner and spent some time with Supervisor Bushnell, talking about the power issues in the southern part of our county, in both our districts, was able to show her a lot of the tree cutting under the lines with the trees left behind, which is a big issue. And we were able to talk about herbicide spreading. I was able to take her, she was able to view the offshore wind. She got to see the onshore cabling, because she is both broadband and energy focused. So it was great. It was great to have a Public Utility Commissioner spend a Sunday, the whole day. I think we got done about 7:30 that night. So I, RCRC allowed me that. John Kennedy, our policy advocate, allowed for that. So I like serving on that committee, and I appreciate the vote in a second.
All right. Well, speaking of that, we haven't voted yet, but Supervisor Madrone?
I want to thank Supervisor Bone for his incredible work there at RCRC. It's legendary, literally. But thank you so much. You're so dedicated. You go to everything you can. You're always heading down to Sacramento. And also for Supervisor Bushnell for being the alternate and learning the ropes. You've got a great mentor there and a great, great person to show you how that all works. So thank you both for your service there.
All right. So I think we are at the point where we're ready to vote. Anyone?
Eight.
Mine hasn't shown up yet. Oh, there it is. Yep. Got it.
All right.
Five votes. Congratulations. Time check? Do we have time, do you think, to squeeze the Sheriff's proclamation in?
Yeah, we can't read in closed session until exactly 9:30 or a couple of minutes ahead, and I think that the shakeout presentation will be brief.
Perfect. All right. So we're going to move on to our special presentation, which comes to us by the sheriff, and it's the Great California Shakeout 2022 Proclamation, which I do have here, and we could read, but for the sake of brevity of time. Beautiful.
Yes, I'm here with our OES manager, Ryan Derby, and Greg back here. So as you know, OES is always working on preparedness. One of the biggest things that we do is preparing for that big one, okay? And every October, we have that opportunity to do the shakeout and to raise public awareness, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, right? The big one is going to hit the North Coast. So I would like Ryan Derby to accept the proclamation and to give us a few words here about preparedness. Go ahead, Ryan.
I'm going to bring this to you while you're speaking.
Okay. Well, this was certainly a surprise. I wasn't expecting this this morning. But I do just want to highlight the importance of these exercises, these drills. We use this as an opportunity every year to push out a community-wide Humboldt Alert notification, and that's our way of notifying the public of the need to evacuate or any critical incidents that are happening in the county. So at 10:20 on October 20th, we're going to issue out a countywide alert notification. And this is a good opportunity, if you haven't done so now, to register at humboldtgov.org/alerts. We'll be coupling that alerting notification with a training of our Emergency Operations Center and a tabletop exercise to build confidence and competency for our local responders in addressing these incidents. And also, much thanks to Greg's work, we've got 55 volunteers that are going to be participating in a multi-county communications drill, using ham radio operators from Mendocino, Trinity, Del Norte, and Humboldt Counties to test our ability to communicate throughout the region if and when traditional modes of communication are down. So thank you all for highlighting this. You may have noticed the big 12-foot banner out in front of the courthouse. We also want to just encourage all residents to use this as an opportunity to practice their preparedness and be aware of our hazards in Humboldt County. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. One last thing is, again, like Ryan said, subscribe to Humboldt Alert. That's a way we're going to get our message out to you, as well as Zone Haven. It's part of our, you know, Know Your Zone campaign. And visit ready.gov, ready.gov or humboldtsheriff.org. We have all the information there about emergency preparedness, and we want everyone to be ready, because we are going to be isolated when the big one does happen. So we want to make sure that we are ready. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
And I'm going to throw in just a little offshoot. It's easy. First thing you want to do is turn off your gas. And the second thing is, I live, my next-door neighbor is 102 years old. If something goes bump in the night, that's the first place we go check. Make sure your neighbors are secure, and then take care of your surroundings. And I mean, what Ryan has done, the information that's going out there, Humboldt Alert is great, but pay attention of your surroundings and know what's going on, because if we have the big one, think about any of your flammables in your garage. Do not put them next, on a shelf, because that's where your water heater is, more than likely. So just, just think about things and what Humboldt Alert has and the OES has online of being ready. And you guys do a great job, and you're exactly right. I hope we never use any of it. I pray. But we still pay for insurance every year. We appreciate this from you guys.
And I was going to say, I know you speak from where you've been before, because I can tell you back in 2010, in January, February, when there was the earthquake, he was great with his neighbor, because I happened to be the neighbor, and I was in full panic mode. So thank you. Thank you. Kind of missed that part.
[laughing].
Sometimes it feels like it, but no, you're absolutely right. So any Supervisor Madrone?
Well, thank you both for being here today and keeping us on our toes, so to speak, with all of this. But I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Hansel and Ryan Derby, our OES Director, for all of your help out in Willow Creek this summer. Seems like we have one disaster after another lately, and preparedness is amazing, but also responsiveness. So thank you both for your responses to that community. As you know, we were very lucky we didn't lose a single life and only a couple of sheds, so pretty phenomenal, given how many fires started. So I really attest, a lot of that helped to the community, to both of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for always making us aware and keeping us on our toes, and with that, I'll make a motion to accept the presentation.
Second, and I'll speak to my second, if I may. I want to thank you guys for all this effort. And I also want to speak to that, you know, we're always evolving in regards to this, and I want to appreciate the recognition that you guys have brought to the resiliency element of this, and especially the sort of decency. element of this, and especially the sort of decentralizing our energy production in Humboldt County with relationship to our microgrids and other things like that, that really help that resiliency. And I really appreciate you guys', you know, moving in that direction with the rest of us. I, I think this is great. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we will go to public comment. If you're at home, you should press star nine now to raise your hand. If you're in the audience, you should be standing up now and come forward to speak. Okay, come, come on up.
Thank you all for the preparation we have in place for earthquake emergencies. However, as we all know, we have close roads from our Humboldt County till Del Norte to Redding area and south, with narrow places that a lot of effort has been put in to keep those roads stable and safe. And I'm hoping, indeed, for our best efforts in Humboldt County to keep our roads safe every second, with better support and, and recruitment for our California Highway Deputies.
I think you're going a little bit off the topic here. Can you stick to the, keep to the earthquake, okay?
Well, definitely.
And preparation's fine.
And compliments to 55 volunteers and multi-responders that are prepared for our neighbors and for ourselves, because California earthquakes and around the world, sudden and fast, and the destruction to do infrastructures and, and best efforts. So, this is very good news for California citizens and, and the residents of Humboldt County to be prepared by maybe working through the things on the top shelves that could easily tumble down. And, uh, thank you all for thinking in advance for us and with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here who wanted to comment on this item? Seeing no one? I'm not seeing hands up on the phone?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right, so we'll go back to the board. We have a motion in a second. And I think we're ready for the vote. I think I already did vote. I'm not sure if it's captured. You want to make a comment?
Something after.
I was worried about that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're gonna do.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you for being here and waiting. I'm gonna go to Supervisor Wilson. He wanted to say something, then we'll go to the 9:30.
Yeah, I forgot actually to mention something. We have on consent, which was the licensing with Lyft with relationship to the airport. I know a lot of people have been really, got stuck at the airport or having a hard time getting there if they don't have their own way to get there. And so, ride sharing is available. But I also want to mention, the bus serves the airport too. And I have taken the bus many times to the airport and back. So I want to say that people should know it's really convenient. It's only 20 minutes from Arcata and only maybe 30 from, from Eureka. It gets you there for a couple bucks and gets you back. Obviously, it doesn't work at all hours necessarily, so that's why, one of the reasons why it's really important that we have this ride sharing available. But the schedule's online and it works really well. It's very convenient. So, thanks. Yeah, that's right. No limit on your carry.
All right, thank you for the news brief. So, at this point, we're gonna go to our 9:30 time set. And I'd like to go to County Council to brief us on those, please.
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Corinne Morgan Thomas et al. versus County of Humboldt et al., case number 122-CV-5725. White Circle Commerce LLC et al. versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Numbers CV2200513 and CV2000623, and AK versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Numbers CV200822.
All right, thank you. So, is there anyone here who came specifically to speak about the closed session items? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to those on the phone. I believe there probably is at least one. No? No hands are up?
Madam Chair, we have no hands up.
Okay. No hands are up. Well, then I guess with that, we are going to do our best to hopefully be back before too long, but, but 10:30, 11, 10:45. Well, yeah, we're gonna do our, I know, she's really bad at judging.
She's just holding back.
Yeah. Look, look who's talking now. Okay, we'll be back.
With regard to item L2, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with Collintuno, Highsmith, and Watley PC for defense of the case of Corinne Morgan Thomas et al. versus County of Humboldt et al., case number 122-CV-5725. There was no reportable action taken with regard to item L3. And with regard to item L4, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the case of AK versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Numbers CV2200882.
All right, thank you. So now we'll go on to the departmental item, which is from Planning and Building. And it's a discussion on whether changes should be made to the alternative owner-builder ordinance. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Bass. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. Joining me is Natalie Duke with County Council's Office to present a discussion of the alternative owner-builder ordinance. Could, there we go. So, this really has come about because there has been a situation with one home that was issued a permit under the alternative owner-builder ordinance. And it's raised a lot of questions surrounding the, how the AOB is done, what kinds of inspections are required, and really the appropriateness of the ordinance and whether or not it's been abused. So what we'd like to do today is just give a very quick overview to the board and the public of the provisions of the alternative owner-builder ordinance, present some alternatives, and then allow the board to give some consideration to what may be done or should be done, if anything at all. So, the AOB ordinance was established, first and foremost, to encourage people, largely in rural areas, to obtain building permits. This was also identified as being an important contributor in providing affordable housing within the housing element. And the housing element specifically encourages the continued use of the AOB ordinance. The way it goes about this is it provides design flexibility, material flexibility, and reduced permitting costs in order to obtain building permits. The AOB ordinance is limited, limited to areas outside of community services districts. So any place where there's water or sewer available, the AOB ordinance is not available for use. One of the things that has been brought up is the AOB ordinance only requires one inspection by statute, although it does give provisions that additional inspections can be required. It also provides a longer timeframe.
Supervisor Bone has a question, I believe. Sorry.
So with the one inspection, does that include the electrical, sewer, everything? Because I'm hearing from a couple AOBs that they got more inspections than one.
I can't do this. I'm just saying.
Excuse me, I'm going to deal with it. Thank you. Go ahead Supervisor Bone. And then after that, we'll have staff do their entire presentation and ask questions.
Follow-up presentation.
That's okay. Go ahead, just take care of this one question.
I just gotta follow up me. So, so it is always one inspection or sometimes are there more than one?
Sometimes more than one. I think there are builders who ask for additional inspections. There are circumstances that the code provides when there are extenuating circumstances associated with the site that additional inspections are necessary. Frankly, that's an ambiguity that exists within the ordinance right now.
Thank you.
Okay, and so we'll hold all the other questions till you get done with your actual presentation.
Thanks. So the, uh, one of the really important, I, I want to go back and make sure I mentioned that it does allow a longer timeframe for a building permit to be active and to allow the owner builder to complete the work. It's five years as opposed to what is normally a year. And, and so, there is, with, there, there is a lot of latitude there. I want to also point out, and this is really important, that Safe Homes provisions, which the board recently renewed, are often implemented through AOB. Because the homes that were constructed and are being permitted now would not be able to be permitted under the current building code. And, and so, Safe Homes is often, or I'm sorry, I've got that backwards. AOB is often critical for the permitting of, of Safe Homes. There is also a unique transfer provision within AOB that identifies that upon sale of the property and transfer of the property, that the person purchasing the property is required to either sign a agreement saying that they're gonna comply with provisions of the AOB permit, or that the site, the building is gonna be brought into compliance with the current building code. This is a little bit embarrassing to say, but in the history of the AOB ordinance, we're not aware that this has ever been implemented. So I wanted to briefly point out that over the last five years, there have been a total of 628 building permits that have been issued. Of those, 110 are AOB permits, which is about 17.5% of the total. The size of the AOB homes ranges from, you know, the normal, very small, very affordable homes, 18, less than 1,000 square feet, 50 between 1,000 and 2,000, 25 between 2,000 and, and 3,000. And homes, there's about 17 homes that have been permitted that are over 3,000 square feet. I put an asterisk in there because there are 16 of the homes, of the 25 homes between 20, 2,000 and 22,999 square feet, that were actually less than 2,500 square feet. And then, you can see that the AOB permits are, except for in District Four, are really spread across the county. The highest number obviously is in District Two, but in District Three and Five, we're fairly close, and then District One had a few fewer. So what is, what do all those numbers mean? That the AOB ordinance has been being used to either produce affordable or at least reasonably sized homes. 84 of the 110 homes that were permitted under AOB were less than 2,500 square feet. They're spread across the county. Nearly one in five building permits issued over the last five years has been for AOB. I think the numbers are probably a little bit inflated. In fact, the, uh, some numbers I looked at, in 2018, we had the most AOB permits at 35. And that probably is direct correlation to the Safe Homes program being approved in 2017. So, we've probably seen a few more AOB permits directly related to the Safe Homes program. That's an important consideration in this. In terms of alternatives for the board, they range all the way from making absolutely no change in the program at all, to undoing the AOB ordinance altogether. That would not be staff's recommendation at this time. We would identify that some feasible recommendations that would prevent real abuse of the ordinance would be to set a cap on unit size relative to the AOB, or to require more inspections, or to do away with AOB for new, new construction, which would allow its free and unencumbered use for Safe Homes. One of the things could be a hybrid of, of these various ideas, which would be that no change for houses under 2,500 square feet, and 2,500 square feet is simply a placeholder for discussion purposes. But then the houses that are larger than that, we could require more normal inspections of the house, which would also include taking a look at the grading, taking a look at the location and seeing if there's sense of resources there. One of the other things that is not included in this, but probably should be considered, is given the fact that the Safe Homes program does include this provision for transfer of property and transfer of the responsibility to the new occupant, that some things should probably be recorded on the property indicating that it was approved under the Safe Homes, or Alternative Owner-Builder Program, sorry. So that really concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bone?
Thanks, John. I think everybody can say they had an outpouring of opposition from a lot of the folks that live more than the 20% that are out there. And then the 678, was it, building permits in the last five years?
628.
28? I knew there was something in there. People have to understand, that's just in the unincorporated area. So there is some housing taking place over the last five years. But with that being said, if we were gonna simplify this without doing politicizing it, in a better term, what would be if we took the AOB, left it the same, increased inspections for all units over, I'll start at 35 because somebody's gonna want to take it down. A lot of these houses are off the grid, so they like larger great rooms because they create their own entertainment in a lot of areas. And their families are up there. And it also comes with a, as you said, something on the title that says when it does come time, so you are buying a AOB house that may not meet urban building codes, but has met the certain, and obviously they're gonna look at the house before they buy it. But I mean, to simplify and make as little change as is possible because, again, we're reacting to one instance. And the other thing I would do, just so this doesn't get taken advantage of, you are only allowed one AOB every five years. So you can't use it, and I don't know if you can do that. But I mean, just for a starting point, and everybody can say what dumb ideas all those are. But have we had a lot of AOB complaints up until the last two months? I mean, out of the 100 and some odd that we've issued over the last five years, have we had a appeals or a myriad of complaints on any of the other AOBs?
We've really only had two AOB complaints recently. They both had to do with larger homes.
Okay.
I would also just like to point out that one of the things the board recently did was when we modified the accessory dwelling unit provisions, we allowed that a second unit, accessory dwelling unit could be constructed under the AOB provisions. And that was an expansion of what could be allowed under AOB. We also reduced the time separation from five years to two years. Five years was the old standard, reduced it down to two. But it can go back to five, I just.
But with, with what is going on and with the people that live outside of the CSD situations and everything else, and the lack of housing that we are and the lack of housing that we are experiencing, I think the last thing we want to do is be putting on more restrictions that we've already issued out there to make it almost impossible to build anything. And I think the people in the Hithlins and the rural, the Backlanders, however they be, they have chosen a lifestyle. They want to build their houses. They're not going to build them unsafely because they're going to be owner occupied, you know. And so I'm just wondering if there's somewhere in there we can come to a happy compromise so we're not saddling the people that are already out there. And maybe if people feel like this is a program that's being taken advantage of, we can take those distinct advantages out of there. And I know this discussion will go on, but I thought I'd throw out a starting point.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Director Ford, do you know, out of the 9 homes that were 3,000 to 4,000 square feet and the 8 homes that are over 4,000 square feet, were they all new construction?
Yeah, only new construction was included on these charts.
Oh, okay. So with Supervisor Bone saying about the increased inspections, would that be, would a thought process be that that would be only for new construction and not already existing that would fall under the Safe Homes Act?
Primarily focusing on new construction, yes.
Okay. And what would increased inspections look like?
Well, we included a list in the staff report, and a lot of those are our normal inspections currently. But certainly, I think it's important that there be an inspection of the site before any permits are issued and do setback analysis and do a normal sensitivity analysis to see if there are important resources to be protected there. That's a normal part of the building process now.
And that, that process currently doesn't happen under AOB?
Correct.
And what, how much time would that increase, the permitting process?
For, for an inspection, I'm going to say just a week.
Okay.
It's just, it's a matter of scheduling the inspection. I could say a day, but then if it took 3, people would be mad at me if I say a week and it's 3 days or a day.
Okay, so when you go in and you pull a permit and you schedule your inspection, it happens within a week because?
It happens usually within a day.
Okay.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks, I have a few questions and comments. One is, you know, the purpose of this was to create and maintain low-cost housing in the county. And I guess for me, you know, at some point, 2,500 square feet, 3,000, 4,000, that doesn't, I'm not sure, in 1984 or whenever this was done, I mean, or '85, I was here. I mean, I was, I was a teenager and I remember this discussion. It was really focused, and living in Southern Humboldt, it was really focused around people building smaller houses and living spaces. And I don't think in, I don't think at that time, 2,500 square feet was considered the average house anywhere. Matter of fact, the 1,800 square feet was a ranch home. And so I think we've really changed, you know, we've really changed about what that is and what the impact is with relationship to footprint. So the footprint of a 1,000 square foot home is very different than one of 2,500 square feet. It's actually exponential in its, in its, in its increase in its footprint because of the grading and those sorts of things. So I have some concerns about sort of the, you know, what the intent of this ordinance was then versus its application in the current context. And I think there's some discussion about that. And certainly, when we're talking about houses of those, of that size that maybe aren't necessarily, you know, meeting Title 24 and the, you know, are, are climate impacts associated with that and thinking about this. So I think size is, is, is important in this discussion. But then also, I think, you know, grading, I've, and I want to say like I have heard from contractors that have a lot of concern about what they've seen in terms of what's been built. I've also heard from tribes about the concerns in terms of the, the lack of review in association with this. And so I'm just kind of, I, I, it's just kind of an overall, I just want to put that out there that there's concerns with relationship just to, to the impacts. Then I think we also, when you talked about transfer of ownership, in the ordinance, it actually talks about the builder has to live in it. It even includes renting it. If it's rented, in the ordinance, if the home is rented to somebody, then they're supposed to either have a report to the building inspector or it, the home needs to be brought to code. So I want to be clear that that's what's in the ordinance. And that any change in occupancy is supposed to, these 2 things are supposed to happen. And, and if we have a, you know, if we just extrapolate 30 houses a year for 35 years, I think that's somewhere around 1,000 homes. It's, it's hard to imagine that every single one of these homes is still occupied by the builder that built it. And the reason I bring this up is because we take on, I believe, we take on a certain liability as a county when we allow for non-standard homes to be built, when we allow them to be not up to uniform building code. And we have to balance that liability that we take on if, especially if folks are not, if the, if, because we, it's explicitly enumerated in the, in the ordinance that the liability is on the builder. And there's a lot of language in here that's really key about that. And they have to sign a waiver and do all these things so that we don't take on that liability. But if we are not actually enforcing or have a mechanism to, to move that forward through the system, then you could have 2 or 3 owners down the line thinking that they have bought a house or they are renting a house without disclosure that it wasn't built to uniform building code. And then who's liable in that situation? And I'm not, I'm not asking you to answer this question because we're not really supposed to receive that kind of advice, legal advice, in this context. But it is something that we have to concern ourselves with. Because when I say "we," I mean, every other citizen in the county has to take, you know, ultimately takes that liability, you know, as, and we have to be responsible to everybody else in that situation. And I, I want to figure out a way that we can, we can get there. So that's why, for me, the, the bigger the structure, the more liability we assume. And so I want to make sure if we're talking about affordability and liability, that we're, we're, we're being responsible, I think, in that, in that way. The other thing is, I think, a little bit of a, in looking at the code with relationship to whether, whether a building is within a jurisdiction or a, or a community services district, I think it also says in there whether it's also within their, not just within the, but within their sphere of influence as well. So I assume that that's being reviewed. And, and it also says what's foreseeable. So if it's foreseeable that a housing site is within, could be within a, in the future, foreseeable future, that the housing site could be within, you know, a, in, a community services district, then I think that's, that's something that should be looked at because obviously we're getting some of these that are within, certainly line of sight of, of community services districts. The frequency of permit, I think, was interesting because we just discussed that. It's like, if people are doing these multiple times, they're living in it and then moving and then living in it again and then moving, and we, and they, and, and the transfer of liability hasn't been occurring, then we have a big gap in this, in the way this ordinance is written and the way it's applied. And it's, it's gaping from my perspective. We have to think about that. And then the fire safety element of this. You know, many of these structures and, and the, you know, this is 30 years ago or more. The, the fire safety element of this, I don't think is updated to current standards. And I, again, I question our reliability to allow for structures to be built in high fire zones knowing that we're not meeting the standards that the state is requesting of us with relationship to this and the liability associated with this. Again, it comes back to us. If we're allowing that, then we have to balance between what we're allowing and what we want to get out of it and what the benefit we're going to get as a community. It, it was also under inspections, I have a, there's this, "Structures of conventional or simple construction shall be inspected at a single inspection." And I'm not sure what that even means. If it's not built to code, how is it conventional? That, I don't, and that is not, to me, that's a concern I have. I discussed the changes in occupancy, again, that's, and then with the record keeping, this is on us, in the record keeping. It says, "It shall be the duty of the chief building official to keep a permanent record of all pertinent transactions under this chapter and to render a monthly report to the Board of Supervisors concerning such transactions." Did that, did we, I mean, did that, I was, I'm pretty sure that's probably maybe never happened.
I don't believe it has.
Yeah. Then, then it's the enforcement of this. I mean, we're supposed to be, under this ordinance, basically if the owner has, or I mean, if the builder has moved out of this and either sold it or rented it, then under this, these provisions, it becomes, the building becomes a public nuisance. I mean, under the provisions, that's how I read this. Because it's potentially a danger to people who don't know that it's not built to these codes. It's in the ordinance, it's written in here. And so I think, you know, there's a lot about this ordinance that gives me pause. But still going back to the part where we need housing and we need affordable housing, and that's really where the focus, I think, needs to be. And maybe there's a place where this can go, but I think that there's some real concerns that, and some pause that we should take with relationship to this. And I'm happy to have more discussion. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone? I didn't know. Steve, did you? Do you have your, did you, didn't see? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
You know, Mike, I agree with a lot of that, but, and the liability has got to be, so we've been, how many, John, there's been 2 instances with AOB where we sued on both of them?
I don't think we've been sued on the AOB at all.
Okay. I just, and this is the liability issue because I, just 2 weeks ago, we permitted or we overruled 765,000 square feet of buildings out on a peninsula in a tsunami's tide zone, and liability wasn't an issue. I, we're, to make chances, we have to take chances. I don't think they're extreme. I think everything we do is a liability. But we also have to weigh the facts of the 20% that have, of the building permits are out there. And if we make it tougher, my biggest fear, we're not even going to get the, you've got to remember, most, a lot of these are being built outside the realm. That's why I said maybe we, the larger homes and ranch is not a size, ranch is a style. So I just, I live, you know, in an 1,800 square foot rent-style home. It's not on a ranch, it's on a very small lot. Other people up here live in acreage and things like that, but I live on a very small lot. But what I'm saying is, outside these community services district, I think we would be doing a disservice both to the people that live in AOB homes, want to build an AOB home, and the ones that don't, if we start taking the tools away for them to do that. So if we're going to go over, so that's why I limited the, the 3,000 square feet was a compromise. It did, it's even, I guess you could even go to 2,500 by the numbers. We're still at over 80% of the homes. And giving these people the opportunity to live on their houses a little bit cheaper, provide housing, maybe an auxiliary dwelling unit. This has not been an issue in 35 years till we had a problem between Eureka and Arcata. And all of a sudden now, we need to change everything because of one situation. That was a situation that was a calamity of errors, misgivings, however you want to look at it, that should have never happened. But I don't think we changed the whole flow of the river to, that has been a working situation over one air. We fixed the one air. We fixed the one air. We fixed that right, so it's best for the community. But to change a whole 35-year program of AOB, which are 15 to 20% of the homes being, anywhere between 16 to 20% of the homes being built, and has been a somewhat successful program. And if we are going to change this to an extreme where we are going to hamstring the people that are building these out, you know, I would love to know what the acreage is, all these AOBs we're sitting on, the minimum acreage, maximum acreage, but a lot of them are remote. They're going to go back to building houses that have no oversight. And that's why we have the Safe Homes, that's why we have these programs so we can bring these people into the fold and, and, and bring them into some form of legality so they feel like that they are part of, you know, so we can work with them. I don't know what that looks like, but the sky isn't falling because something, one thing fell out of the sky. We need to address that. But this is a program that has been working, this is a program. And I, I don't know what it is, I don't get a lot of these, I got a lot of emails. I got a lot of, I got a lot more phone calls, but that said, "Please do not limit this." And I, it's no, Ellen Taylor and I don't agree on a lot of things, but she gives me a lot of input. But she has a pretty good pulse on rural, you know, at least in the Matola Valley. And they're looking for no changes. I'm looking at some changes to calm some people's nerves. But I, I would be comfortable with no changes in the AOB because I hate reacting to one thing. I hate knee-jerk reactions. We've got to change this immediately. Maybe we take time and see if this is a huge problem or is this a small problem? But I, I don't have a problem with a 3,000, 3,500 square foot house getting more than one inspection or some of the things what our director has said we could do. Are we following all the guidelines that were brought to us 35 years ago? Probably not. Maybe we could fine-tune those a little bit. But this is a program that has worked for rural Humboldt. And we have 2.6 million acres and only about 100, less than 100 of it, I believe, is incorporated. 120, something like that, you know. So I'm just, I'm just saying, there's a lot more in CSDs. But I think putting more hamstrings on rural Humboldt, I think, is, and the fire danger? How many AOBs have caught on fire? In all honesty, people that live in the hills put out a lot more fires than they start. Lightning, chains, things like that. So I, I think to throw everything on a rural home builder, I, I can't agree with. I'm not a rural liver, so I can't say that. I'm a downtowner, I guess, so.
Well, I know I had Supervisor Wilson, but Supervisor Bushnell, I saw her, do you, do you mind if? Okay.
I was trying to see who I saw first and I wasn't sure.
I, I think, you know, we have to ask ourselves a bit of, you know, if someone's building a 3,500 square foot home, we're, we're then assuming that they can't afford to build something that's livable to code. I, I think that's something we have to really ask ourselves, especially when everybody else who lives within all these services districts has to play by those rules. And to just say, well, if someone lives outside of service district, then, then they have different rules associated with that, it's, it's a concern. I'm just saying, we have to bring balance into that. And, and I, and, and I will say that it's true, the code does say you can build the ADU, which is 1,200 square feet associated with this. And I think that's from, I have to say, it's like, I live in a house that's smaller than 1,200 square feet. I've raised 2 children, there was... I've raised two children, there was a family before me with four children. I'm going to say that, that what's affordable housing, again, we have to balance with what we're, what we're willing and to understand is what we're trying to promote versus what's being taken advantage of in all of these other situations. And I do think that there have been, although this, you know, the situation that kind of, you know, bubbled to the surface here, I do know that there have been issues, uh, where folks have really had a lot of concerns with relationship to the safety of these structures and within these communities, but also, just like the, especially around grading. I have to tell you, like, I've really heard some, uh, some pretty, some horror stories around grading that has not been inspected under the same, uh, purview. So those are my concerns. I, whatever we do today, will, will, um, will, uh, it'll be what it is, but I, I, from my perspective, I, I think, I would propose a moratorium, uh, of anything over 1,200 square feet, uh, and over, I, I would ask the, the director to give a number with relationship to cubic yards, because I do think that we need to think about that, because I've, I've heard of homesites that were, you know, that have just been absolutely huge amounts of grading. And, and, and the impacts from that, I mean, that's kind of where we're at, why we're at, where we're at now, is because we didn't have those oversights with relationship to this one house. And so, those are my, that's, I'm throwing that out there, as I think that's reasonable. And then, we have that moratorium on, on the size. At some point, then we can bring this back for further discussion on sort of the details of how we kind of get ourselves through the disclosures and all these other things, because I don't think today, we're going to be able to get ourselves through all that. So those are, that's, I'm throwing it out there. Thanks.
You, Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, thank you, through the chair. So, recognizing what you say, Supervisor Wilson, not, your reality isn't everybody's. And while you wanted to live in a 1,200 square foot house and raise children, that is considered a pretty small size in today's world. And, um, and also, you know, first of all, have you seen any of it, or is it hearsay? But you act like these homes are being built and they're shambles and shacks, and they're not. Most of them are not. I'm not, I'm going to finish before you respond, because that's what you said. I, I would ask Director Ford that, um, with the same Safe Homes Act, that no, no change would be for, for structures already built in the rural areas over the Safe Homes Act, that would be preference, correct? Because we really need to protect that.
Yes, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. And then, secondly, if we were to put a square footage of, say, 3,000 square feet or small, or larger, on new construction, and an inspection process, could it be a pre-site, a middle, and an ending, so that it follows somewhat within the AOB ordinance? And what would that look like?
I'm not sure what, the, the, I'm not sure the question, what would it look like?
So, when I, when I asked you, and you emailed me some, what inspections look like for traditional, uh, there's a lot of, lot that goes on there. And under the AOB ordinance, uh, you, you do a one, right? A final?
Typically do a one. I think there, it, there used to be more, um, and it was really based probably on the contractor or the owner-builder who was working on the property, wanting to make sure things were inspected.
Uh-huh.
Um, I, I think that, you know, the pre-site is important, I, I think electrical plumbing is important, um, the structural is important, those can be done at the same time.
Okay. Does that take away, though, from the AOB? Thoughts?
Well, the thing that takes away from the AOB is the fee, um, that's collected versus the amount of time staff spends on it.
So is there, is there an availability if we increase inspections and to adopt that fee into the, into that process?
Yes, there is that possibility.
And also, so, calling, coming in and getting a permit, and I understand you say that it should happen the next day, but it doesn't always, and sometimes it's up to three weeks, and, and anyways, going forward, it can sometimes happen. So one of the thought processes with AOB is the time, you know, to save time, right? Or is that not a true statement?
I don't think AOB was really about time.
It was about fee structure?
It was about encouraging people, um, to come in and get permits.
Okay.
Because in the rural areas, there was a tendency, especially in the back-to-land movement, to not get permits.
Right.
So this really was an effort to make it very easy for people to come in using alternative materials, alternative practices, to come in and, and get a building permit.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then my, I wanted to ask about the grading stuff. So with the AOB, can you make your house site on new construction without grading of, uh, without a grading permit?
So sometimes the grading permit is included within the, the construction permit, the building permit. And so I, I think the concern here is that if you're doing significant grading, and you're not requiring an engineering, a geotech report, you're not requiring an engineer sign-off, um, you're putting a house, a structure, on a fill, that's not an engineered fill.
So is there a way, without making it too restrictive, to say, by slope or by fill?
Yes.
So I would, I would maybe go there, but not in general. But I do think, you know, if you're putting a house on a 40-degree slope, that's probably a problem. And then, I do think fill is, can be a problem if it's not an engineered fill. But trying to stay within the confines of the AOB and making it affordable for people is where I'm leaning more. And I absolutely do not want to see this for, um, houses that are existing, and anything that would fall within the Safe Homes Act. For myself, for my district.
Supervisor Wilson?
First, I never said anything about shack, shacks and shambles. I never use those words. Please don't put words into my mouth. So, um, uh, I will say that I, I appreciate the conversation around the grading and the, and the engineering. That actually speaks pretty much to a lot of what this is, is that some of these structures, under normal conditions, will require some engineering, and then that doesn't happen here. And, and I appreciate that, again, that owners and, and that are building homes and want to live in them, that is, is fine, I mean, I think that's reasonable. And again, going back to, I, and I received the email from Ellen, and she actually specifically mentioned small, efficient homes. And I, I think that we're, we're losing track of that in this. The idea that in, you know, that, that homes are built, there, we have a whole list in our staff report here of, you know, inspections that don't occur that could occur. You know, gas line tests, um, you know, basically the electric, um, and you have the setback inspection in there, um, and some of these other things. I think, I think we do need to probably have some of that included in how we move forward with this. Um, and again, we just, I know, just because you haven't, we haven't had litigation around this yet, doesn't mean that we shouldn't protect ourselves from litigation in the future. And I want to be prudent about that, and, um, and, yeah, I just want to, I want to make sure that we're, we're responsible. The other part about this is, whatever changes we make, will there be, is there a review outside of our institution that has a review? Like, is there a state review that occurs when we make any of these changes?
Yes. If we were to modify this, it would need to go to Housing Community Development to determine if the alternatives that are being proposed are appropriate.
Supervisor Bone?
John, in a Cliff Notes version, when somebody comes in and wants to get that permit for an AOB, do they just come in and say, "I want to build an AOB," or do they have to give you an idea of a grading plan, a building, a sketch, a footprint, a diagram of what they're going to do? Because, um, I don't, you got a different email than I did from Ellen, because I don't see where it says "small." But I, I don't think we can sit here, and I think we're, we're telling people, if we go 3,000 feet, we're telling them what they can live in. I, I don't think I want to tell anybody, "You can't live in anything bigger than I live in." Um, I think it's, it's great that we live in a, usually we all live in houses we could afford at the time we bought them. And, um, then if we can expand, if we, if we're fortunate enough, we do that. If not, kids grow away, and the kids grow, and then the house grows back into perfectly good size, or we live in the garage. But with that, um, I, most of the owner-builts are, you know, like I said, they, they tend to have a lower carbon footprint, because they use a lot of the materials they have already. Um, but I, I understand fully that we need to protect ourselves from litigation, but short of wrapping our whole population in bubble wrap and telling them never to leave home, we're never going to be able to stop litigation. Because we have one lawyer for every 352 people in the United States, or something like that. So we're never going to, sorry, um, we're never going to stop litigation, because that's how they make their money. But protecting ourselves right, and we have protected ourselves to a certain extent, because we haven't been sued in 35 years for our AOB program. Now that there's the potential, and we're sitting up here talking about, hey, they could sue us, that will probably open the floodgates. I agree. But with that being said, if we make the minor changes, like go to a 3,250 square foot, or 3,000 square foot, which is not a McMansion by any means, and I, I, like I said, I live in an 1,800 square foot house, um, it's what I could afford, pay $200,000 for it. Um, but, but when we, we do this, and we don't make rapid changes, and then you guys can up, you know, like you said, maybe two inspections, and then, how long do they have to live in it? Let me get that clarified again?
Um, there's no residency requirement, it's just that the same person can't pull AOB permits more often than it's currently every two years.
Can we, is that considered a major change? If we double that to four years? So it isn't abused, or, or people don't get the perception it's being abused?
I, I think that's a fairly easy change.
And then, um, I, I, titles and everything else, I, I don't know if I want to put something on the title, but I think most of this comes out, and you have to disclose that you're moving into an AOB house when you buy it. A Realtor I talked to said yes, but maybe not, maybe you, but...
I, I, I think under real estate disclosure requirements, the ethical thing to do is to disclose.
What was I saying?
Well, okay, with that being said, maybe you do, maybe you don't, but I've only bought eight or 10 pieces of property in my lifetime, and every one of them I viewed and got an inspection, so I'm pretty sure somebody's going to come look at it besides me, because I don't know anything. And most people are going to look at it and say, deem it a responsibly-built structure to live in. I, maybe it is not to urban standards, maybe it is not to urban standards, but I don't really know if we need to change a program that hasn't been problematic, except for one seems to be instance that is taking on a life of its own. So I just, that, that's, I, if, maybe in a year, we get four more of these, and, you know, and it, it hits the fan, I'd be the first one to eat crow and say, hey, maybe we need to do something more. But, but I don't see an issue, and putting restrictions on any building and housing right now, I think sends a terrible message. Liability be damned.
So, excuse me, we don't have, thank you, I know. Do that little thing, thank you. So, um, no worries. Supervisor Madron, and then Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Well, in full disclosure, I've taken out two AOB permits over the years, and I found it to be a really excellent process. Uh, in my case, and I think many people's case, it's, it was really just a, a way to reduce the permit fees. Uh, I still did everything to code, because I wanted to be able to say that, if and ever I wanted to sell, which I doubt I ever will, but it just seemed to me it made sense to build a code. But I also have lived in a WikiUp for four years out in Honeydew, that was basically just poles that were made into a basket with tarps over the top, and it had indoor plumbing, believe it or not. So I, I've been around long enough to remember the United Stand movement that happened in the 1970s. They created this push for an AOB ordinance. Uh, I actually had multiple inspections, but not nearly as many as if you do a normal building permit. I think it was, they needed to come before the walls had sheet rock, to see the electrical, to see the plumbing, to see the structural elements before I sealed them up with sheet rock. Uh, I didn't find it onerous, um, and again, the fees were less by doing AOB, and that was really my primary motivator, because we were poor and we were trying to stretch every dollar. But I've lived in situations and been around a lot of people that have built structures where they came into town and found whatever pieces of plywood were left over behind the store somewhere. Uh, and I think Ellen Taylor's letter spoke very eloquently to people being really creative and coming up with materials, rock on site, whatever it might be, to build a home for their family. And I fully support that. I, I really do not want to see us throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, here, simply because one, one site got out of control. I think there was actually another one, did the big house that went in up on the hill up above Redwood Creek on the ridge line, that was also AOB, I believe.
Correct.
And it had massive grading and all kinds of things. So isn't, it's not just one, there have been a few, but there are always these really big things that are literally 8,000, 7,000, 10,000 square feet. I don't see a problem with saying, how about anything over 3,000 square feet goes through the normal process? Supervisor Bone offered 35, you said three. You know, if you're building something over 3,000 square feet, you probably have the funds to actually go through the normal process and get, get a regular building permit and get the inspections and all that stuff. But things vary for people. They really do, quite a bit. But I just think that this was ideally meant for people building their own homes, uh, and doing it as cheaply as they possibly could with the materials and resources they had available to themselves. So I'm not, I'm not looking to do a lot of modifications. Like I said, I, I do think, you know, a moratorium on things over 3,000 might be good. If we want to make a lot of changes, it sounds like we would need to bring something back, and I think even Supervisor Wilson suggested that, um, because we have to be able to see how it fits in with Housing and Community Development, is that correct, HCD?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, but I do think, you know, right now, in the ordinance, there is in fact a clause in the ordinance that requires a seller to disclose to the buyer, and the buyer to sign a piece of paper that goes into the file, into that parcels file, that says, "I'm aware I'm buying a house that wasn't built to code." Why wouldn't we want to do that? I mean, I agree that there is some liability here. When we have something in law, and we're not actually enforcing that, it absolutely puts us in a liable position. And it seems to me that we ought to tighten that up. And again, if you want to build something not to code in any way you want for your family, great, but then if you want to sell that to somebody else, it seems reasonable to let the buyer know, and to have a piece of paper that they're acknowledging that. Why, why, how is that onerous in any way? I mean, I don't see any onerousness to that. It seems like the responsible thing to do by the seller, and it's certainly the responsible thing on the part of the county, if we're going to have this in our code, in our ordinance, to actually require it, make sure it gets into the file. So I think there's a few things we need to do to just kind of tighten up how we're implementing the existing ordinance, and I would be supportive of a moratorium over 3,000 square feet. Um, I think the grading is definitely problematic as well, but you know, the way the ordinance is written right now, it actually is incumbent upon the building inspector to be looking at those plans that either include grading in the building permit, or has a separate grading permit, and looking at the way things are being built and ask the questions, "Do I need to include a grading inspection? Do I need to include an electrical inspection?" Uh, and that's already written in the ordinance as a discretion on the part of the building inspector. Hopefully that can be done better. I think we've been kind of missing the mark on some of that. But again, I'm not interested in adding a lot of onerousness to the ability of people to build homes. to build homes. Because I mean, I think that's at the heart of it. The principle here is that we're short housing. And we need to be encouraging people to do all kinds of things that are reasonably safe for the occupants, to create that housing. And I have been a long supporter of actually allowing for waterless toilets, composting privies, just right out of the gate, as a way to increase our housing stock, because those sewage requirements, et cetera, really do constrain. I mean, you're building a tiny home for 30,000, but by the time you do the sewer hookup and everything else, you've got another 30 or 40 grand. Suddenly, the whole cost has doubled. So we're not getting as many ADUs and tiny homes on properties as we'd like. And with SB 9 now, almost all residential parcels can almost automatically ministerially add a second unit, or an accessory dwelling unit, and things like this. But it's still the sewage requirement that really constrains it, makes everything so darn expensive. And I have seen a lot of responsible owners with composting privies and waterless toilets. And when we suggest that septic systems somehow are God's gift to sanitation, they're not. They are polluting groundwater tables all over this county, where they're put in way too close to springs and streams, because the weather testing window doesn't open very long, and when it does, it's really not saturated soils. And when you get saturated soils, we've got a lot of failing septic systems that pollute our springs, our streams, and the ground. Whereas a waterless toilet doesn't do that, right? It's just a matter of handling things safely in that process. So I'm a huge advocate for actually increasing the ability of being able to do that. And I think right now, you're able to do that as long as you have a septic system. Then you can put in a waterless toilet, or whatever, in another unit. Is that correct, Director Ford?
You don't have to have a septic system.
You have to be able to put one in. The site has to be compatible to, you have to have a leach test at the very least, or soils investigation.
Correct.
Anyway, I think those things would be great. But that's just my thoughts at this point. I think I'm actually in line with just about all of you, probably on some level here.
All right. So speaking of in line, we've got Supervisors Bushnell, then Wilson, then Bone, and then I would like to get to public comment.
Thank you, through the Chair. So I, first of all, want to make informed decisions, and I would like to see this come back with some accurate information on if we've done stop work orders, how many, you know, problems have we had. Admittedly, this one issue with the, that this came up with the house, that's all we've been talking about, there were issues at, with, the department didn't do some things that they were supposed to, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if we do our own job, maybe this, that kind of things wouldn't happen, and I know you're working on that. But I don't want to make decisions based on reaction. We're reacting to something, one thing. And I want to have informed information come back to us on, you know, I asked you yesterday, have we done stop work orders besides the one? And that information wasn't readily accessible yesterday. Well, I want to know that before I make a decision. I don't want to, I don't want people that are following the rules and doing the right things to suffer because one person did not, or two. And so before I make a decision on change, I would like to have it come back with all that information that's pertinent. And then I want, I want to get a commitment from you, that, you know, we're doing our job, so that, you know, that maybe would take care of the entire problem.
Okay, Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks, I have a question. In the ordinance, it says, "The County Health Department shall prepare regulations which specify the type, design, and number of sanitation, bathing, and washing facilities to provide at each dwelling site. Such facilities shall not be required to be placed within the dwelling and the design and use of maintenance and standards of gray water disposal treatment systems." Has that occurred?
I think the Health Department continues to develop regulations to look at various types of disposal facilities. Most recent has to do, I think there is provisions for gray water systems, there are provisions for waterless toilets, for composting privies. But the fundamental issue that kind of is to hang up right now, as I understand it, is the need for a septic system overall, in case any of those other things go awry, that the fallback is to put in a septic system.
That you know of, is there, do you think that, do you know of any other county that has an owner-builder ordinance? That has a way, or an exception to uniform building code?
I don't. We can research that, and then bring that back as part of additional information.
Okay. I mean, I think when we say, I don't think uniform building code, for most of the state, is an urban-rural divide. I think it's pretty, that's why it's called uniform building code. And so I think we're unique in that, and Humboldt County is unique in so many ways, and I appreciate this one, too. I mean, I have to say, I lived in a teepee, you know, in Salmon Creek some years ago. So I get this, I mean, I'm not, I want to say, like, you know, real clearly, like, I have these concerns, and some criticisms with association with this, but ultimately, it's to build affordable, it was to build affordable housing for folks, and make some accommodations to make some housing more affordable. And, but, my, kind of one of my points is, is like, and I think Supervisor Madrone said it fairly, probably better than I did, which is, if you can afford to meet uniform building code, and the site can, it's obtainable, and you, then, I think we have an obligation to promote that. I mean, ultimately, because there are a lot of good reasons why we have it, or why we have uniform. What we're trying to balance is, is there are occasions and creative ways to create housing that, you know, that is, that's not, doesn't fit into uniform building code. And we have to, we have to be, you know, do our best to accommodate for that, too. And I'm glad we're gonna get some public comment on this, and I'm glad we're having a robust discussion about this. But ultimately, I think the board, you know, we have some differences on this, but we're trying to ultimately create housing, and have housing. So with that, I'm happy to listen to public comment, thanks.
And Supervisor Bone, then we'll go to public comment.
And I'll, you know, I want to make sure the square footage is whether we're 3,000, 3250, 35, or any at all, is just including the dwelling, and not ancillary, or garages, or anything else. The other factor that, and I'm uncomfortable doing this, and I guess, no, I'm having a hard time looking at somebody and says, it looks like you can afford more, so do more. We have no idea what somebody can afford. We would hope that they have, and we're giving them enough right, to let us know what they can afford, and the reason they're doing this is because they can't afford to go mainstream, and they're in an area where we've allowed this. So as we do this, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna ask for W-2s, or we're gonna ask for, you know, well, I think you can afford more, because you're building a big house. No, maybe I have enough materials saved up that I can build a bigger house. Maybe I've got five kids, and I need a bigger house. And I don't have the internet, so I've got to do something with the kid. I'm just saying, I don't know if we can do that part. And as far as us regulating what goes on, you know, what, real estate, I don't think that goes, I don't know if we can tell how they close the real estate. We can certainly say when it gets to us, what we can desire, and things like that. But the other biggest problem we have with when we start putting these things on people's titles, is we affect them financially down the line if they want to sell that property, they want to, whatever they want to, it becomes, you know, this is an AOB, so you, conventional financing, or even hard dollars go out. And I know Mike's getting all excited about that one. But what I'm saying is, hopefully, before you buy that house, you do the inspection, like I said. And sometimes, we are not, I know we're gonna get into litigation, it's not our job to protect everybody how they cross the street. We try to make it safe as possible, but we're putting limitations on people's, a lot of people's most valuable resource. And I'm just guessing at that, I'm not gonna have you say, this is my most valuable resource, here's my W-2. But if they want to build more than they can afford, and then they're going to make it work, who are we to decipher that? So I just, and again, we're looking at a program that has not had any problems for 35 years, and now we're gonna come in here and protect you. We're the government, trust us. That made everybody shiver. It does me.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go to public comment. Supervisor Bushnell, you really want to get one in now, one more? Okay.
Well, I just, you know, the responsibility, us taking on the responsibility of what buyers and owners need to do is just awkward. If you're buying a home, you have your own responsibility to ask those questions. And I don't understand why we as supervisors or our county would govern that. You know, I think everybody up here has bought a home. Did you ask, is it permitted? Is it, and if you're, you know, is it legal? And also, if you're gonna do financing, the bank requires that before they'll lend on it.
So the way I'm seeing this, we're gonna go to public comment, and then we're, I don't think this is a done deal today, we'll be coming back, I am pretty certain of that. So we'll go to those who are on the phone, and then if you're in the audience and you wish to comment on this specific item, please stand at the side of the room, so we can move more quickly through the comments. So go ahead and just stand there, and we'll get to you as soon as we go to those on the phone. Just makes it easier for us. So we have a couple speakers on the phone, looks like we have 7884. Okay, 7884, press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes maximum, you don't have to take all the time.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Mike Gordon from Hydesville, can you hear me?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, hello. The Alternative Owner Builder Program is more vital now than it ever has been. Our community has a long tradition of thinking outside of the box when developing in one of the most rural parts of California. CCAT at Cal Poly Humboldt is the poster child of many of our strategies and techniques to rural development. The AOB program has given flexibility to owner-builder dwellings, and has helped to champion new and innovative ways to reduce our footprint while living holistically off the land. The AOB problem, or the AOB program is not the problem here, but the Safe Homes and Abatement Programs are major problems. These exploitive programs force compliance through extortion and coercion, and threaten to unravel the fragile relationship between our government and its citizens. What the county, or our county needs is a true amnesty for the generations of unpermitted development in the hills, by grandfathering in unpermitted development as the baseline moving forward. If expansion or repurposing of buildings is proposed, then the AOB program must continue to be afforded as a streamlined approach to permit otherwise unpermissible buildings. Forcing our community to tear down perfectly good buildings that have an indefinite useful life is a prime example of the wasteful mentality that is pushing Mother Earth to the breaking point. And increasing the costs and burdens of permitting alternative ownerbuilder homes could push our neighbors to the breaking point as well. I have known many people who have utilized the AOB program over the years with great results and positive outcomes, but everyone that I have heard from who have engaged the planning department to permit through Safe Homes has been met with substantial costs and threats to tear down their otherwise safe dwellings. Should a developer be able to use the AOB program to permit mega mansions? Probably not. But should the planning and building department have exercised additional oversight when the program was used for a new 20,000 square foot building on sensitive legacy tribal wetlands? Definitely so. But I fear that if we tweak these rules regarding this program as a reaction to recent missteps, we will only increase the cost and decrease the effectiveness of what AOB has always stood for. This program has been an asset to our community for over 38 years, not a liability. Please do not make substantial changes, and please do not intertie AOB with the temporary Safe Homes program. John Ford, I do have a few questions for you. How many people have utilized and actually been approved under Safe Homes to date? Through the Safe Homes program, how many applicants have been told to tear down their homes? And what would be the implications of each of these changes to the cost and feasibility of actually getting people permitted moving forward? Thank you very much for my time to speak today.
All right, thank you. 3053, I think that's you, Thomas.
Good afternoon, not quite afternoon. Thomas Mulder here, I just want to clarify, you can hear me there, Chair?
Yes.
So as I spoke earlier today, I spoke with passion. Don't really have a lot of notes, just I saw this agenda item come up, and I purposely didn't reach out to any Board of Supervisors or staff, just wanted to hear what it's about. Part of my gut reaction was, when I saw the agenda item, I felt it may be because of one incident of a large home, or it may be because of some supervisors wanting to attack rural Humboldt. I listened to the report today, and I hear from staff's perspective, what I'm hearing is, it looks like because of an incident, there, we need some more inspections. I'm hearing by a supervisor, maybe two, that maybe you want to look a little bit more at rural living. As someone that has purchased a piece of property that had a shack residence, I brought the permit process through under AOB, and it was good, we had multiple inspections, so I didn't know that there was the ability only to have one inspection. I would be supportive of multiple inspections. I could see how you could be supportive of capping it maybe over 5,000 square feet. What if there's a family, a multi-generational family with lots of kids, you know, they need to get 10 people in a household? It's that. Or are we looking at, you know, the family needs to build a village? I mean, there's a small village policy coming up, so who knows what's going on there? It would be interesting if we would hear the same liability concerns when that village policy comes up. Please do take note of that. Please remember, if you're gonna change it to every four years, you can get an AOB permit, that, don't forget that policy was changed to two years to support the ADU policy. That's why someone should come in and get a permit for a house, and then eventually build an ADU for another family member. Please do not take our future generation's rights away from being able to build a house. I mean, I have land, I would love for my grandson to be able to build a home there. Do you want to take away that right? I don't know. And as far as the Safe Homes, I'm currently trying to bring a place that I acquired forward under the Safe Homes Act. We didn't get wet weather last year, so actually, it's got mailed that a wet weather variance was approved, so I'll be able to tell people how that Safe Homes Act comes, or works going forward. Please listen to smart, sound policy decisions, please don't do a knee-jerk reaction. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. Next, we go to 3403, press star six to unmute.
Hello, this is Tom Grover, can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome, Tom.
Hi, this is Tom Grover from Redway. When Dan Toronto passed away, he said to me, Tom, you're in charge of the United Stand program. And I went, what? I can't do that. And I certainly can't replace Dan Toronto, who fought for many of these owner-builder regulations that we're talking about today. In a little bit of history, the people, the back-to-land movement came in and started building houses, and used their own wood, which was ungraded, hence illegal, so they could not get permits. People were told at the time from the planning department that they did not need permits in the rural areas. Nobody cared. And they didn't in those days. Then people put in solar panels, and they were told by the planning department they had to rip them down, because they had no code about solar panels. This insanity went on for a long time, and that was the origin of the Class K housing, which was passed by the State of California. The State of California is governed by the Building Code, the California Unified Building Code. That requires every house to meet all of those regulations. So Governor Brown, back in 1980, I believe it was, passed Class K housing, which allowed the rural districts to pass their own rules governing particularly small owner-built homes that were alternative in style, building style, and alternative energy use, and things like that. That gave the right of Humboldt County to pass its AOB ordinance. That gave the right of Humboldt County to pass its AOB ordinance, which they did sometime later. That original Class K, I believe, and I couldn't check this out, but I believe that was topped out at 2,000 square feet. I think it's wrong that Humboldt County is doing it for larger buildings. I think that was in the original stuff, but don't quote me on that. Okay, so the AOB was passed. Now, there's also a state law that says that if a planning department makes a particular decision, that they are exempt from liability, provided that that was a legal decision. That was a legal decision due to Class K, so people cannot sue on the basis of that. Supervisor Wilson is way out of line on that. That is not the way the law works. Otherwise, the county would be up to their neck in all sorts of legal stuff. Okay, so here we are today, and the AOB was great for people who...
So Tom, Tom, I'm sorry, but it's a strict three minutes. I'm really sorry. Just a reminder to everybody, it's three minutes, and the microphone automatically mutes after that, so I do apologize. 7429, you're next. Press star six to unmute.
Hi, good morning. This is Robi Tenorio. First, I'd like to thank Supervisor Bushnell for her statement about protecting the AOB process. It's that there's agreement that the problems related to the recent AOB building that's motivated this agenda item, problems can be assigned to a lack of oversight by the planning department. And rather than discussing changing the AOB process, I think your time, of our time, would be better spent discussing why one project that's so far out of compliance wasn't acting courage and helped through a process to speed unimpeded. And it looks like the planning department brought this item to your board, and it feels like a bit of a distraction, that the examination is misplaced. Like, here's a problem, not over there, with our planning department and our planning commission. So that is my concern. I don't think at this time you should rush out to change the AOB ordinance. I also want to comment that I really appreciate Supervisor Madron's advocacy for waterless toilets and gray water systems, and that would be the direction I would move in, but it's not, not. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Robi. And next, we have 6655. Just press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thanks so much. I just want to second everything all the callers said so far, completely in support of everything mentioned thus far, and I really appreciate Michelle Bushnell and Rex Bone's comments in addition of course to feed Madron. He's been such an advocate on this front, and thank you so much, you guys. This is Nicole Morris. I'm also a dear friend and the neighbor of Peter Childs, who has the very first owner-built permit in the state. And of course, you know, he helped start the Citizens United Movement. I wish he was on the phone today, but unfortunately, he's not. But I can confidently say that he would not be in support of any changes being made to his and Dan Toronto and Tom Grover, Don McCain, so many of our honored elders here worked so hard in the 80s to make this simple and logical. And I haven't really dug into the new policy. I apologize, I haven't had time to, but I just couldn't miss the chance to put my two cents in here. As a reporter also, after investigating, you know, the county's lack of affordable housing and such, mainly with the Trinidad commune known as Yee Ha, I'm convinced that the county's expensive and complex policies are actually the primary reason we lack affordable housing, and we have such extreme health issues. I've tracked people personally who used to have a place to live, but it wasn't up to code, and the county abated them, and then they were homeless. This has happened to a lot of people. You know, people having to move to these beautiful teeny homes that they designed on wheels, like homes that we would all be thrilled to live in, folks that are lower income, you know, really nice places, but they keep getting abated, and then they have to move them around and such. So back to Yee Ha, they currently house over 30 people up there, and they're looking at having to spend over $100,000 just to do a safe parking program as a community service for our county. He's already been doing that for decades, but he wanted to come into compliance because he was facing $63,000 in penalties for helping house people affordably. And then the compost toilet, like Madron was saying, you know, it's adding tens of thousands on top of these costs for Charles Garth to come into compliance, again, as a community service to provide low-income housing. And so I'm not sure if we should consider overcomplicating something that's founded on...
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, three minutes goes awfully quickly. Thank you. Then we, 7108? I think it's Bonnie. Bonnie, I think that's you.
Good afternoon. This is Bonnie Blackberry. I want to support everything that all the previous callers said, and they brought up some really great concerns and whatnot, and I feel like this is a local contractor taking advantage of the AOB and the planning department somehow losing the ball and allowing all sorts of stuff, maybe call it mistakes or whatever. Anyway, so I don't want that to bring down everything for all the people that have been complying or would plan to in the future with this AOB. And I feel like, you know, putting the women on the side, I could see that, and dealing with new permits, where there's a whole bunch of grading. But other than that, I think that stick with this and deal with the problem with somebody abusing the program. Focus on that.
Did she hang up? Did she? Okay. Okay, so the next is 9493. Press star six to unmute. You look like you're unmuted. Welcome.
Hello, this is Dylan Matoll. First of all, I'd like to echo pretty much all the feedback that I've heard from the commenters. I appreciate what's been said by Supervisors Bone and Madron and Bushnell, and really resonates with me what Supervisor Bushnell said, which is that, you know, the county needs to do their job, and that's really what we should be talking about. As Robi also mentioned, that's where this review should be, is with the planning department, not with looking at an ordinance. I was born and raised in an unpermitted house. Almost all of the community I grew up with lived in unpermitted houses, and I can tell you that I do not know of a single situation ever where a house has hurt somebody or killed them. So I don't really think this is a big issue. I think that we have an extreme housing problem, as has been mentioned in this county, and personally, I was forced to take down a 30-foot yurt, which was providing housing to a person who lived in it for seven years, and told me that that was the longest time they'd ever had affordable permanent housing while living in Humboldt County. And they had to move out, and the yurt was demolished, and I think that's an absolute shame. And I think that what we should be doing is quite the opposite of what's being talked about. We should make it far easier, less complicated, and more cost-efficient to build new housing in this county. So I think that we've heard a lot of passionate comments from citizens, and that no changes should be made to this program, maybe with the exception of a size restriction and more oversight by the county. Also, as an AOB permit holder for a project, I definitely had more than one inspection. Fire safety was reviewed, and had to be compliant with CAL FIRE turnarounds on the site map and everything else. So I'm not sure, I've never heard of anybody building a project and only having one inspection, so not sure what that's all about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dylan. We'll go to those in public now here. Thank you for being patient, and please come forward, and you have three minutes, and welcome.
Good morning. My name's Tom Becker. Came here in '75, hitchhiked in a hairy hippie on a trippy-trippy to go back to the land movement. And a lot of people come here for different reasons, and we didn't come here to own all this stuff. We didn't come here to, like, create a dynasty and all these things that people are doing. We come to live simply, so others could simply live, live off the grid, and believe in what we did and how we did it. And our integrity was way more than the code. All these houses the speakers are talking about were way stronger. If we needed a four-by-six, we'd do an eight-by-ten. You know, I call typical hippie construction, THC, right? I knew I'd get a laugh out of you on that one. Have to bring some humor into this thing. Keep this shit, keep this sanity. It's a plea for sanity, you know? I really appreciate what Rex, Mr. Rex Bone said. I've never been in one of these offices before. I gotta get to work, you know? I'm still building stuff. So I come here, I learn how to build out in the hills. Came into town, I built the Salmon Creek School, Salmon Creek Fire Department, many houses up there, many houses up Island Mountain, Whale Gulch, all over town, you know? I painted all this stuff. I probably painted this courthouse, I don't know. You know what I mean? It's like I stand there, oh yeah, I did that one. And so it's a call for sanity. It's like, look, don't change anything, bring in the compost shitter, that's very important. Forget the thing about the septic field, forget the grading, and even the numbers of the sizes of the houses, so what? You know? It's none of our business. People come with integrity to buy land, live on the land, live off the grid, and create their own homestead. And we've got to honor that. That's like some kind of an American foundation. It's a dream come true when you actually build your own home. And so thank you all for having me. I don't, I'm nervous, I don't really come to these things. And one thing that all these houses did, it created a whole economy. Think of all the money that got spent on every bit of that. Ask Mr. Pearson, ask these people, Steve Daisy, they made fortunes off this stuff. And it's like, we've got to honor it and make it easier, like the one guy on the phone said. Make it easier. I concur with everything Rex said, what Steve said. Mike, I don't know, a lot of that stuff was kind of ambiguous, it doesn't really, it's a moot point, you know? But I dig that you lived in a teepee up Salmon Creek, I did too. So more power to you all. Keep up the good work. It's a beautiful day. I'm going to get to work, okay?
Thank you. Can you come back more often? Sounds very nice. Welcome.
Hey, guys. My name's John Callahan. I've been a resident here in Humboldt for 13 years. And I just came to comment on behalf of myself and people that are in my similar position, and thinking about the historical aspect of the AOB, but also how we can move forward to protect young landowners and home builders that, especially recently, have been hit by increased home and rent prices. A lot of people in my position have been saving up, looking to buy a home, and then all of a sudden, things just like double. And you're like, well, what do I do now? Okay, I can buy a piece of property, and I can, you know, build something myself and save some money, and put my back into that, and get a little sweat equity. And I just think it's really important to consider that, because as the community moves forward, that is the community's future. And if we, you know, start to bar that for these exceptions and stuff, we're going to lose sight of what this community is about. You know, I think a lot of people come here because there are these alternatives, whether it be, you know, milling wood that you had your hands on yourself, or whether it's timber framing your home, or these alternative means of, you know, building a place for you to live your life out, and Humboldt offers that. And I just hope that we keep it in sight to keep that door open. And yeah, there might be some loopholes and some liability issues at hand, but, you know, those need to be addressed in a certain way, but we do also need to keep that window wide open for people to build their homes and their lives here. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, John. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Alan, and I came to this meeting to learn more about the building department. I've had experience with the building department recently since March. I've had code enforcement send me a lot of paperwork to accomplish, to fix up a home, but still, they couldn't find the paperwork to have it. The home was permitted already, and when we went through code enforcement and the building department to ask them to bring up their paperwork for it from the previous years, they couldn't find it. So something's up at the office. I don't think the staff, they're probably working really hard. Everyone's probably working really hard since the past two years. I just think that, well, we have inspectors here, and then I know there's a short staff, and it's really hard to get anything done because everyone has to drive really far. What happens if there's a private inspector? Now, major cities have other inspectors. You can hire an inspector, they work with the county, that could create a new job for somebody. I don't know, that's like, just here to help create jobs, stimulate the economy. What else is there? One more, yeah, one more minute. I guess too, if you're going to specialize, if we can specialize inspectors to focus on like a cert, like on A, oh, alternative builder, owner-builder permits, that would be better, because I feel like if you cross-mix one person to do it all, they're going to be like, I can't figure it out, I can't wrap my head around it. I'm working in the city, then I'm working in the country. Maybe you have broken down to have one person to specialize in rural development, then that would change things, and then they would be more serious, or they relate more to the people who own and they're trying to build on their land. All right, I think that's about it. That's all the time I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Jake Garth. I have a couple of notes here. I think restriction and rules would make it harder to follow codes, it'd make, increase, it would make more violations. Lots of citizens believe it's too difficult to get permits. Make it easier to make happier citizens would make more housing, lower fees. Don't go against the American dream. Everyone's here for the American dream. Everyone wants to experience it. I know lots of people getting their property seizure violations for code enforcement because they get overwhelmed, unable to keep up with things. Don't restrict the ingenuity of citizens. A strong citizen is a strong community, government, stimulate the economy, creating jobs here in Humboldt County. Permits should, permits for AOBs should be free because it encourages people to get permits instead of people building without permits at all. instead of people building without permits at all. And lots of times when you go to the Building Department, you get stuck with obstacles and hoops. And lots of times people have no experience as a builder and they feel overwhelmed. Don't make criminals out of honest, hardworking citizens. As citizens, we give Supervisors, Building Department, other government bodies a lot of power. We as citizens need freedom to live or to have to move away. And lots of people have moved away just because it's very restrictive. You've heard of the people moving away from California just because it's so restrictive and hard to make a living. Lots of times people make same amount of money in somewhere they've never lived before and have a lot less expenses. Make housing more affordable, we're having a housing crisis. And we're all trying to have a good economy here, get everyone here good jobs and be respectful of everybody. That's about it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right.
You might want to lift that up a little bit too. There you go.
Hello, my name is Kevin. I am here today, basically out of disappointment that this is even something that is being considered. And apparently it was brought to your attention from the Building Department. To me, it almost seems retaliatory after a class action lawsuit is being filed against the county for excessive code enforcement practices that seem targeted towards people living in the rural hills. I have also dealt with the Building Department as a previous public commenter noted. I would say the records keeping department needs a lot of work, a lot of paperwork seems to get lost, which then leads to more, what seems like retaliatory actions. But on the subject of the owner builder code, I have read it multiple times. I really don't see where it opens up the county to liabilities, to be honest. Like someone was saying, if you wanna do owner builder, you have to do like the driveway turnarounds, you have to have like your fire water set up. And it's all very specific and designed to release the county from liability on those projects. And I'm sure that people will try to abuse it, which is why it's being brought forward. But I would urge the Planning Department to, you know, I think that's their job. I think the owner builder code should be left alone, as is, it seems like a perfectly fine document to me. And we do have a housing crisis. And as Madron pointed out, it allows people to be creative with materials. Not everyone can go afford to buy lumber that meets these specific specifications from Daisy or Ace or the lumberyard. Anything else? Oh yeah, and I would, and I also appreciate Steve Madron's mention of composting toilets. I think that would solve just a huge problem out in the hills. I see more problems with leach fields causing issues that are fully permitted than I do with a perfectly functioning, dry, waterless toilet. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Timothy Deegan. I believe we have a housing crisis, we need less rules, not more rules. I don't think how much money you have or how big a house you are trying to build should change the rules for you. Everyone should have the same rules that apply to everyone. And ten people doing the wrong thing, or two houses doing the wrong thing should not bring us all together to try and change the rules. It should take, you know, at least a hundred, two hundred people doing things wrong before it becomes a serious issue. We have hundreds of thousands of houses in Humboldt County, two to three people shouldn't ruin it for everyone. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Timothy. All right. And Steve, before you talk, just, you don't have to use the whole three minutes, and it has to stay on this topic of the change, potential change in the AOB code.
Right. So Steve Davis and I'm talking about alternative owner building ordinances. And I'm also thinking about the opportunity for our libraries and our high school students coming as close to required reading of our unique Humboldt County codes and the California codes for building. I'm hoping that Tom Grover from Redway will write down the history that I think our Cal Poly Humboldt students would be appreciative of. I'm one that is supportive of hemp and cannabis being part of the history of quality building. I'm concerned about the abusive builders, if they're over costs and timing. I'm hopeful that our safe homes program and our urban building codes versus off the grid codes will be more defined because there are accidents when there are stiff winds coming along or rains that might blow down a family's dwelling, or some of our hopefulness of more and still more legal campsites getting wet if they don't have pallets under their tents. So I'm hoping typical hippie construction will continue with the best wisdom and integrity that your districts will be allowed and will work through the paperwork and the inspectors that young homeowners and land investors will find our county as the best place to invest in their future and hope that other neighbors and places where your integrity and our efficiencies to bringing more and still more affordable housing will be inspired along with architects that continue their brilliance and creativity and the history of architecture and creative pursuits of quality living conditions inside and outside. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So I was gonna say, as we come back to the board, I did wanna say, two of us are leaving in like fifteen minutes, so I wanna give a heads up to the board. Supervisor Madron, you may be over here shortly, or as I can tell so far, this is going to be coming back to us at some point in time. So just wanted to let you guys know, don't feel bad if two of us just walk out.
It is coming back to us?
No, I'm saying from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's been interest in things being brought back to us.
Well, all right, I appreciate, I appreciate you don't get another bite of the apple.
No, sorry about that.
Oh, can I just leave one more note?
You can leave.
You can leave your notes.
You can say that you guys could write more grants in for people.
Okay, wait, yeah, okay, we got, you can email it in to us, it'd be great if you have access to that. Thank you.
So, anyway, I appreciate the public commenters, I really appreciate the two that were able to say something that has never been said before. We appreciate what Rex and Steve said. But, and I appreciate the composting toilets, because I can remember sitting up here eight and nine years ago, fighting for composting toilets, and I was told water quality, all the reasons we couldn't have it. I tried and I tried, you can run with it now, Steve, because I still think they're a great idea. You're exactly right. So with that being said, I would, I'm gonna make a motion, and take my beating as I should, that we keep the AOB program in place, all housing units of over thirty-five hundred feet be put under a level of scrutiny that is far beyond what it is now, and to be followed And the reason, and the reason is this, and no one can build an AOB, no one can build an AOB under the new construction in less than four years. Now, there are people out there under the AOB program and safe homes and, that are trying to bring structures up to date that are already built. I don't wanna encumber those because some of them have multiple structures on larger parcels.
Second.
What? Wait. Can I just say it?
I'm so confused. What just happened?
I wanna do an amendment.
And that's fine.
Well, let him finish his, and we've got a second, I was really excited.
If I did that, everybody'd jump my ass. So I'm just saying. But, and I like it, so you guys can do that, I like, I wanna be relaxed on this, because all in all, I think at the end of the day, we're trying to not encumber people and make it as easy as possible to people build safe houses. Anyway, this isn't part of the motion. You've got the motion, what I've said. Now, the reason is, is that covers the fear of the McMansions being out there and putting out, and we stay under, and we don't encumber the people that are in the safe homes, I'm not joining the two together, but we don't encumber the people that are in the safe homes program that are trying to find amnesty and get these to work for them. And somewhere near, if we can throw in that Steve's now in charge of waterless toilets, I'll throw that in there too. But all in all, I think it is a situation, and this is now just why I'm doing this. This is, we're reacting to a situation that hasn't been a situation for thirty-five years. And so we're making minor tweaks to this. I understand that there are people out there calling Supervisor Wilson. I wish some of them would have called us, or at least come to the meeting today or called in to tell us their concerns, and I didn't hear that. I just heard from a lot of people that are concerned that we're changing a program for no apparent reason but one. So that's where I'm at.
Motion second. We had a potential amendment.
Can I speak to the second and clarify the motion?
No, you're done.
I swear to God, the motion is.
You seconded it, wait a second.
I wanna clarify.
If I can.
You seconded something you're not clear about.
That's right.
Just to beat me.
That's right.
All right.
So I wanna clarify, what I think Supervisor Bone is saying is that the AOB, was it, you wanna have a moratorium on ones over three thousand five hundred square feet? No.
No, he didn't say that.
No, I do not want a moratorium. Because there's not enough of them being built to throw a moratorium into it, I think the numbers are.
So what was the, what was the thirty-five hundred?
The thirty-five hundred feet will be a different process, three, whatever the Building Department deems to be responsible, so we can put at ease what we're doing. So I'm, I think John kinda understands where I'm heading, because we discussed it, maybe we go to three inspections, maybe we have a pre-site, we have one in the middle, and we have one at the end. I don't know, but the thirty, you were, everybody's so worried about these huge houses that aren't being built, but a few. But the, most of the AOBs are smaller dwellings for outside CSDs.
I retract my second and gleefully hand it over.
Can I, so I would ask the motion maker that we say thirty-five hundred square feet. I'll second with some changes.
That's fine, that's fine, why would we make them?
Thirty-five hundred square feet, two inspections, same price, and go in with the AOB for we keep the permitting price the same, because that's one of the issues, is the cost. And I don't wanna say somebody has money because they're building a thirty-five hundred square feet, maybe they have ten kids like we were talking about. So I would just say thirty-five hundred square feet, two inspections, which.
Thirty-five hundred square feet, what?
That above thirty-five hundred square feet, you would have two inspections.
Fine with that.
That you would, but we would still do the AOB cost for the permitting.
Never say anything about changing the cost.
I know, but I want to be specific, because you weren't, and you were leaving it to him. So, and currently it's one, correct, Director Ford?
Well, it's a minimum of one, but as was stated today, there could be three or four inspections, depending upon the need. And the code does allow that. So just by saying two inspections, I mean, we'll have a minimum of two.
At least.
Yeah.
If I may, I think.
You want the second back now?
No, I don't. But I do think that this list should be applied to anything over thirty-five hundred square feet. It just minimally, because I have to say, a structure of that size has impact. It doesn't matter, I mean, and has potential impact. And I wanna point out that we, this does, this did boil over because we've had a few larger home sites that were AOB and had problems. And I'll ask, I'll ask Director Ford, if the two which are, have been the largest, the ten thousand square foot and these twenty thousand square foot, if they had actually gone through a regular permitting process as opposed to AOB, do you think we would have had as many of the problems as we would have had in these cases?
Can I ask that, can I ask a question that goes right along with that? If we had done our job to begin with, would we have had these problems?
So on the one, we absolutely did a fantastic job of catching up with that. What they tried to do was do a three acre conversion, then grade the side of the hill for a house under the three acre conversion, and then build an AOB on top of that. We did not let that stand. We required them to get an engineered grading permit because of the amount of dirt that they moved, because of the fact that it was on a hillside and there was a tremendous amount of fill being pushed over the side of the hill. That was an AOB permit, but the grading we treated as a violation, and so wrapped in a, an engineered grading permit on that. I'm a little, we're, we're doing a good job of catching up with that one and getting that one under control. The struggle with the one that really has been in the press recently is that it wasn't, the inspections played a role. Had we been able to do a pre-site there, we would have been able to identify that the house was entirely out of place. Had we been able to do a pre-site there, we would have identified that the grading itself was a violation. Had we, and so that really is something that alternative owner builder doesn't necessarily call for, because that isn't a steep site. But the amount of dirt that was brought in made it a far different site.
So because it's been in the press so much, Director Ford, it sounds like construction started well, well before the permitting process. Would this have even, with that knowledge, I mean, obviously there's large problems with this one structure, and this is why this item is coming. So, so I don't think we can really, like hone in on this one structure, there's multitudes of things that happen there.
No, I, you were, I was asked the questions about the two permits, that's all I was responding to. I, I think that one of the things that happens with builders a lot of times is that we respond to requests for inspection. So if somebody goes out, and it's not unusual for somebody building a house, especially under AOB, to not call for inspections, if they're in an isolated location where we're not driving by it all the time, we're not gonna see it. And even if we were to see it, we still need permission to go on the property. So I, I think that in fairness, I mean, I know a lot of people wanna throw the Planning and Building Department under the bus, and we did make mistakes here. The mistakes we made were in permitting, though, not in the inspections.
Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks.
And then, seriously, a few of us are leaving, so if this isn't finished, it's coming back.
For me, I'm gonna ask the motion maker and the seconder, I believe that we should have a setback inspection for all AOB minimally, because, and that is the recommendation of staff. And I think because we don't know, is there a stream? Is there an arc site? Is there all of the other things that we could have, be having impacts on the community or on the general welfare of these watersheds? And we're not doing a setback requirement, which I think, I think is kinda minimal. I mean, we're doing it for everything else, and from my perspective, a setback check is, is just the minimal thing that we can do to actually, to actually ensure that we don't run into a lot of these problems. And that is a concern I have.
Would that be tied into that first inspection where it said? I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to. I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to, and quickly, so these guys can get it, what I'm trying to get to is, the whole idea behind the AOB is not to pay for another inspection. So if we're going to put that person out in the hills, and we're going to send another inspection, we're another $600 into it, and then we're going to inspect this, we're going to inspect that. So maybe they could inspect that setback, then if they, if there's an issue, then we have to address it. I think they, there's a set of rules that they get, they have to meet, and obviously somebody hasn't met it, but we haven't run into the issue, and now we're, now we're throwing watersheds, we're throwing fire, we're throwing earthquake, we're going to throw everything we can at this, and at the end of the day, what we're trying to get is affordable housing for citizens of Humboldt, because we need it. And, and we can throw, and I mean, liability, fire, everything we can. I'm going to stick by my motion, if it dies, that's fine, no moratorium, I would like to increase the inspections to two, and they can check the setbacks when they go that. I'm trying to, the AOB is there for a reason. It's 20%, 15 to 20% of the housing that we get, and there's a reason for it, and nobody, nobody has called me, and nobody spoke against this with all the people that have, you've said, have been coming out of the woodwork to say this, nobody stepped up. We did hear from people that are hoping to build something on their house, not necessarily a yurt at the benefit that you had as a child or as a young adult to live in the hills in a yurt, or whatever it was, but to build a structure that they can live in, and I think that's what the AOB's done for years, so they can't profit, they can't go in and get another AOB for a new construction, because a lot of these are trying to bring the AOB through the Safe Homes program. What this does, this doesn't complicate, this, this, this tightens it up a little bit, but the AOB program for 35 years is not to restrict people, is to bring them into the fold with something to the effect, and I'm not trying to give a pass or anything like that, I'm just saying, we heard from a lot of people that live in the hills, and, and not in the hills, that are hoping to keep, to maintain that lifestyle.
I want to say, for the record, one, I spent a lot of time in Peter Childs' house as a young person, I just want to say, and Peter and Sherry, and it is, and I have actually spoken to Peter about this issue, so I want to say that I'm not totally unfamiliar with this situation, I want to be really clear, and I want to say that the public comments that we got today were amazing, because we got comments from folks that you, we know do not comment in public very often, I want to say, and, and I want to say it showed, in a bad way, it showed in a good way, it really showed heart and soul, and I want to, I want to really, you know, commend some of those folks, because you can tell they're not public speakers. That being said, I do think we need to go a little bit farther to tighten this up, that's just my opinion about this, I, the way the motion stands right now, I'll vote no, but I do appreciate what AOB is trying to do, and I also appreciate the issues that are coming forth, and I think we're going to see more of them, and that's where I'm at.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Supervisor Bone for his very respectful, and just, I really appreciate the way we've been working together today, and I want to thank you for that. I'm looking forward to it, believe me, I find it to be a breath of fresh air, and I applaud you for your effort today, thank you, it's sincerely appreciated. You know, we got a lot of work to do up here, and when we can respect each other's differences, I think we get a lot more done together, so in that spirit, thank you for that. One quick question, then a couple quick comments. Director Ford, when you pay for your AOB permit, there's a fee for it.
Correct.
How many inspections occur doesn't change the cost to that applicant, or does it? If there is more than one?
I don't believe, I don't believe it does.
Right, so I just want to be clear, that just because there's now two, or maybe three or four inspections, it doesn't mean the cost goes up to that applicant at all, it's just part of the flat fee for the AOB, so thank you for that clarification. I actually think that the motion on the table actually weakens stuff, but it, you know, in the ordinance, which I've read in great detail, it actually provides the ability for the inspector to require the number of inspections that that person as a professional believes is needed, given the site-specific situation. And I always used to tell my students this, that the best answer to any question is, it depends. It depends on the site-specific situation. Is there grading going on, is it a steep slope, you said that earlier, you know, what are the considerations? So just saying, we're going to have at least two inspections for the big houses, for me, that actually weakens what's already there by discretion. The question is, will the inspectors use their discretion in an overhanded way and get carried away with it, which we've seen at times, or will they use it appropriately? And I'm hoping that all this recent publicity and discussion might actually allow Director Ford to meet with his staff and say, make sure that whatever you're requiring is appropriate for the site-specific conditions that are happening. And so there's already really strong language in the ordinance that allows for that to happen, rather than saying we're going to have two for over, over 3,500. I still really believe we ought to have a moratorium of using AOB on anything over 3,500, I just feel strongly about that. And the last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, sanity is part of sanitation, right? And that's why I speak a lot about waterless toilets, because there's a lot of sanity there in the use of that, and protecting our water supplies and so many other things. I have in fact had many complaints from people about the safe home programs, where they had a house, it's got a septic system, but they also have an accessory dwelling unit, and they're being required to put in a septic system for the ADU as well. And it's, you know, it's, I know it's not what we're here today, but I actually think we need to be giving more direction, not today, it's not on the agenda, about how we're implementing the safe home programs, and allowing for AOB approaches in that, et cetera. But as it sits right now, I don't think the motion actually gets us where we need to be, but out of the interest of time, I'll close my remarks there.
And what I would say, since I'm, we are leaving, I personally am fine with no change today, I feel like we're trying to rush this, and so I don't know if there's something that can still come back, I mean, it doesn't matter, I'm only one vote, but that's just my, I feel like we're trying to rush something.
I as the motion, I as the motioner will pull my motion back after listening to Supervisor Madron and realizing everything that is in the AOB program, is that going to be okay with that?
I would make a motion to continue this item, and to bring it back to us at a date uncertain, to have a larger discussion about both the AOB ordinance and the Safe Homes program, and think about what can we do to make them both work better.
Can, so think, can I?
Yeah.
Can, I, I don't want to continue it, I do want to maybe in the future have another discussion, but maybe the director could inform our board of some of the things we've asked, and, you know, like, I would like more detail, like I said, and then maybe we can, if one of us wants to engage Director Ford to maybe bring it back, then, based off some of the information we've requested, or at least myself, I would entertain that, but I don't really want to continue this at this time.
I'm going to second the motion to continue, because I do think we need to come to some conclusion of this in the near future.
Well, and I'm going, continue means different things, it's like, we continuing it to a time certain to come back, yeah. John, what are you thinking right now?
So I understood it was a motion to continue to a date uncertain, to have a discussion on AOB and Safe Homes program, and what I really understand to that is how to make them both more effective. One of the other things that you could do today as an alternative is to, well, that's the motion as I understand it on the table right now.
Thanks.
And I will, to the chair, sorry, I will vote no, because right now, I'd rather prefer a motion, when I pulled it back, I would have preferred a motion of no change, and then we'll deal with it later when Armageddon hits.
Well, I will support the motion, because I think it gets to the, kind of the same conclusion.
Can I ask one question? Director Ford, we're supposed to be getting reports to this board, according to the ordinance, can we work on that?
Well, that was, I think, one of the things that I was going to suggest perhaps, rather than a continuance on this, is that one possible solution would be to vote today to remain status quo with the direction to bring the reports back as required by the ordinance, to bring a complete update of the questions that have been asked, and also some of the historical information back.
That's what I would like to see.
And then to also agendize a discussion on the Safe Homes program, and the circumstances associated with that, that's a bigger discussion, because Safe Homes doesn't, doesn't regulate by itself the waste disposal, that's going to require DHHS to be here for that discussion also, but that, that would be another alternative, sorry to confuse it.
All right. I think we're ready, my computer's down, Nikki, so.
Same place. I think it ends up with the same result. This motion versus what you said, they're slightly different?
They're slightly different, but I believe it ends up with the same result.
I think we're ready for Nikki.
Okay, so to be clear, we are voting to continue, or the motion is to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Okay. Discussion of it. I need, my computer's already down, and so Supervisor.
Okay, I'll do, I apologize. Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Bushnell? No. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes three to two.
Okay, and at this point, we're going to close session, but I'm turning this over to the vice chair.
Sorry.
Safe travels for both of you.
Thank you.
So if the county council could read into the record, the reason for the closed session, please?
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6, in order to review the county's position and instruct designated labor negotiators.
Thank you very much, and we will be back in, what's our estimate? Uh, thank you, we'll do that, but what's our estimate for coming back?
I'd say probably about a half an hour.
Half an hour, okay, so theoretically, we'll be back about 1:30 or so. That's an estimate, and if there is any public comment on this closed session item, let's take that now. Seeing nobody present stepping up, how about on the phones?
Supervisor Madron, we have caller 3053.
Okay, could you unmute yourself and give us your three minute or less comment, please? Star six to unmute, thank you. Caller, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go, yes, we can.
Somehow my phone, I don't know what was going on there.
No worries.
My apologies, Thomas Mulder here, talking about labor negotiations. It was, I will say, you know, factor in that the decision made just before this agenda item probably is going to be a light item budget of $2,000 to $10,000 by continuing that to, you know, so that may be money that you don't have on the table going into negotiations, just something to think about. And then there was many comments that I perceive, but maybe, maybe I misperceive them, I'm not always great at communication, there are comments that I believe sounded like staff isn't doing their job right, this and that, and different things like that, so one could think that if you come to the table with a less than significant offer, you may get declined, and I don't know how the county's negotiations are, I just know by past experience in school board negotiations, how that goes, when staff doesn't feel appreciated, or doesn't feel like, you know, when they do their job over and above, over and above what they're supposed to, and then publicly, there's like, hey, they didn't do their job. So just think about that when you go down to the table, and don't forget, the decision before this took away $2,000 to $10,000, I would guess, estimate, maybe you might want the staff to clarify what those kind of decisions cost on a budgetary, fiduciary standpoint. Thank you for that previous speak.
Thank you, Call Manager, is there any other hands up?
No, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you very much, and with that, we'll move into closed session.